All right, it is seven o'clock, so we'll begin our regular meeting. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We will start with roll call.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Tron.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
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 You have before you the regular meeting minutes for June 10th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Move minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Next is the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission. Since Amy did such a great job, I'll have her tell you again what our mission is.
The mission of the City of Yankton is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. So whoever's phone is going off, they're buying donuts for the next City Commission meeting. Just a couple of very quick things for you all. Brad Bees is working in conjunction with a number of departments, and we're doing some Facebook videos on Walnut Street. So if you haven't been down to Walnut Street, we have the lanterns installed, the lighting's up, the fire feature is working, and we're ready to show off a little bit to the public. So in between rain showers, we're doing little videos, and we're gonna have some staff, and also our folks from Stockwell help us out with introducing that to people, so check that out. We are still in the midst of reminding people that they cannot recycle the plastic bags, so our Public Works Department is going to be doing some mailings and replacing everyone's magnet. So throw your magnet away. That says that you can recycle plastic bags, and you'll get a new one. That's coming as well. I won't talk much about sales tax, but I will remind the Commission that we had a positive sales tax month for May, so good job there, and we'd like to see that continue into the summer. Fourth of July is around the corner. You should begin to see PSAs about fireworks, and you'll also see a PSA about your solid waste and recycling collection. So just a heads up to everybody, Fourth of July this year is on a Thursday. So if you are a Wednesday or Thursday solid waste person, solid waste will be picked up on Wednesday of that week. If you are a Friday and Monday person, you will be having your solid waste picked up on Monday. So if you don't know when, just put it out on the curb and it'll get picked up, but you can also look at our website. That'll be, information will be on there. Our transfer station will be open on Friday from eight to noon, and it'll be open regular hours, eight to 3:45 on Saturday. So that seems like a long ways away, but it's coming up, so just to some hours around the holiday. And then not to forget to join us for fireworks that evening at Riverside Park. I'm happy to answer questions, otherwise I'll let you get to your business.
I have one question about the plastic bags for recycling. Let's say a person were doing some shredding. A friend of mine. And the shredding is supposed to go into a clear plastic bag. Is that still the case?
My understanding is the only time that you can put your plastic bag in the recycling is if you have your shredding in that plastic bag tied up. So that is permissible, but not loose plastic bags. They will pick that plastic bag of shredding out. So you can tell your hypothetical friend, please-
I'll let her know.
-her shredding's there.
In regards to this plastic bag, you know, we look back in hindsight, and I spent time on the Joint Powers Board, they never did like them. They never did, and we tried to make a exception, so we have so many of them. But I think it's really, we need to find out how we can not use them, period. Now, just, they're a mess. And you can see why they tangle up in the machine. They never liked them. Joint Powers didn't like, or I mean, the Millennium didn't like them. And it makes sense to me, in hindsight, for what it's worth, I think we somehow need to set in the future to get rid of them. And I know some cities are actually right now trying to outlaw them. You know, and I know they're probably, obviously, how many times have you been offered paper at a grocery store? Because I'm sure they cost more, I imagine, but I think it's something in the future that we need to look at.
Bring your own bags to your stores that you use.
There are still places that are accepting them, right? Like, I think Hy-Vee used to have containers and stuff that you could take them and drop them off.
Hmm, well, thanks for that. I did not know that, but yes, apparently there is.
Yes, I asked at Hy-Vee when I was in line, and you can take the bags back to Hy-Vee, and they send them back to Des Moines for a visit? I don't-
It's a vacation.
Not sure.
Yeah.
But they'll take care of them and get them out of town.
Are there any more commission questions for the City Manager? All right. Next, we have public appearances. This is a time for members of the audience to address the Commission about items not on tonight's agenda. We do have one scheduled public appearance, and that is from Mr. Brad Wilson. So I would ask Brad to step to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As he mentioned, my name is Brad Wilson. I am the Administrator for the SDML Workers' Compensation Fund. Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you, Amy, for putting me on the agenda. The SDML Workers' Compensation Fund, you may be wondering what exactly we do. We provide the workers' compensation coverage that as an employer, you're statutorily required to have to cover your employees for work-related injuries. You pay us, and we pay and manage the benefits that you are obligated as an employer to provide. We also, in addition to that, are endorsed by the South Dakota Municipal League and the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, the league of which the City of Yankton is a member. Other benefits that we provide is that we work very closely with Amy and your Safety Committee. We've recently helped with some loss control or risk management ideas. We also provide a grant program of which the City of Yankton just took advantage of and was awarded a safety grant for trenching and confined space equipment, which I believe, remember, because we just received, or just requested the check this week, was for some air quality testing equipment, I believe, if Tanner, I don't know if Tanner is here, but he would know exactly what that is. But anyway, that was a thousand dollars back to you that you didn't have to pay out of your budget for that equipment. So we go beyond what insurance would normally pay, and we offer those types of benefits along with the free loss control services. But the reason for my visit tonight is that we are celebrating our 30-year anniversary, and actually, we're on about year 32. We have 496 members, and there's only so many Monday nights in a year, so it's gonna take me about five years to make it around everywhere in South Dakota to deliver our plaques. But the reason is, for that 30-year anniversary, on behalf of the South Dakota Municipal League and our Board of Trustees, we are presenting plaques to our long-term members, just recognizing you and thanking you for your membership with us. So just a little bit of history, back in 1987, when this fund was created, the very first year, we had 52 members. And as I mentioned, you fast forward now over 30 years, we're at 496. We cover all the counties in the state, nearly all of the conservation districts, and nearly all of the Class 1 and Class 2 municipalities in the state. So without further ado, I'd just like to present the City of Yankton with a 15-year membership plaque with the SDML Workers' Compensation Fund. And thank you again on the behalf of the other 495 members and the nine-member Board of Trustees and the South Dakota Municipal League for being with us and allowing us to serve you and your employees. So if I may approach the Mayor and present the plaque, is that acceptable?
Yes, absolutely, and I would just thank all of our employees for the measures they take to keep the City of Yankton a safe place to work, as the City Manager is fond of reminding me. Safety is no accident at the City of Yankton.
And if I may say, we worked, like I said, we worked very closely with Al and Ann and the Finance Office. Wonderful. We are like Santa Claus. We do have a naughty list, and they're never on it. Sue Hansen, worked very closely with her on the claims part of it, and of course, Amy's been wonderful to work with as well. You have a great staff, so we're very proud of that.
Again, thanks for all the work you do for our team, Brad. All right, are there any other members of the audience who wish to address the Commission about something not on tonight's agenda? If there is, please step to the podium. Mr. Swenson, hello.
Hi, I'm Gary Swenson, one of the county commissioners. I just have some information. I was a Reserve Deputy Sheriff for Dave Hunoff for several years, and like I said, I've got some more information I want to give you after a bit. I just want to support your program. I don't know how far along you are, but I'll give you this a little bit later.
I assume you're referring to our Reserve Officer Program that we're gonna discuss on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I just read about in a paper, and I just called, and they said your meeting was tonight, so-
Yeah, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Does anyone else have something they wish to address the Commission about this evening? All right, seeing no movement, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one is establishing July 8th, 2019, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for August 2nd, 2019 from the VFW, and that will be for an event at the 4H Grounds at 709 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Now, moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 19-136 and resolution 19-25. And this is also the time to hold a public hearing on the special assessment role for street tree trimming, sidewalk snow removal, and nuisance vegetation abatement. What is your pleasure?
I'll move the memorandum. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item?
Is this in regards to the letters that we've received in the bill?
Yep. This would be it. If you could step to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Peter Moore. I live at 1221 Mulberry Street. I recently received a bill in the mail from the city saying that they came to my house, and they trimmed some trees that were not in compliance with your 12-foot over the road, 10-foot over the sidewalk. So my objection to it is that I received a little postcard that came out, whenever that was, January, February, I don't really recall. But at that point, I went out with a tape measure and checked everything that was my sidewalks and the road and everything like that, and everything was in compliance. And my objection is that I've spoke with a couple of people at the city, and I should have received a letter saying that I was in violation at that particular time. I never received a letter that said that I was in violation when the tree trimming came out. Otherwise, I have always kept my trees very well trimmed, my yard very well trimmed. So that's my objection, is that suddenly I got a bill in the mail for 117-odd dollars to trim like three branches about three inches in diameter. So that's what I have.
Do you have any background on this, Dave?
Yeah, our process is fairly similar every year, and the letters do get sent out, the postcards do, and then there's notices in the newspaper also. And we do an initial measuring of street trees throughout the community, and then letters are sent. And in fact, I think two letters end up being sent prior to the trimming occurring. We go back and we double-check to make sure each time that the measurements, you know, are still the same. If they've been trimmed, then we don't send out another letter. And the preliminary letters that were sent out before the actual bill was sent out were all mailed to the same address. So unless, you know, there's some postal system issue associated with the letters, which is very rare and almost unheard of, they were sent to the same address as the eventual billing. So if the billing was received, the letters prior to that should have been received also. They were all sent to the same address.
Well, I do have a particular case of probably two years ago, you know, everybody loves the Menards 11% off, right? The mail or post office did actually send the rebate to my neighbor. And he actually came over to my house, and he was in Menards and was going to spend it, and he looked down and he saw that it was my name on there. He brought it over to my house with a check that he wrote out for the amount that was difference that he had spent off there. So we have a wonderful postal system, there's no doubt about it, but mistakes happen just about anywhere. I have no, I haven't received any letters. I don't know if we're- I can't prove that you didn't send them, but on the other side, can you prove that I received them?
Yeah, and I guess we could, we have that instance with every aspect of all parts of our business. So I would defer to our normal course of business and assure you that we followed proper protocol and procedure, and beyond that, you know, there isn't much else to say.
Does the Commission have any questions for Mr. Moore? Or Mr. Mingo? All right. Thank you.
Can I add one additional thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know this is kind of off this particular topic, but I would like to, if possible, lodge a formal complaint to my neighbor directly to the north, 1223 Mulberry. Their yard is atrocious. It has been almost every year, their backyard weeds are in excess of eight inches tall on the south side of their house, same scenario. I know when I've spoken to others, and there's been other people in our neighborhood that have complained to the city about this multiple times last year, and I don't know how much this year already, but I just would like to put that out there as well, that this property is horrible. The hedge that they have in there along the back alley, between Mulberry and whatever the next street is over, but it's nearly impassable, and sometimes you cannot see traffic one way or the other when you pull out on there, so you have to be extremely careful pulling out of there, so that's all I got.
Thank you for that. We appreciate citizen reports of potential violations, so we will definitely follow up. And again, as far as your issue of not receiving the letters, not sure what happened there. We haven't received any other complaints this round of people not receiving letters and being billed, so not sure what happened, but certainly feel bad if that was indeed the case.
So I guess what exactly is the resolution here? Is the bill stands, or what? Or do you have to discuss that?
The Commission has the ability to modify the assessment role by motion and approve it, or they can leave it as is.
Do I need to stay until said time, or is that all you need to remind?
We'll be doing it here shortly. So if there's a motion to amend the resolution in the memorandum, then now would be the time to do that. Once again, I would ask, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the Commission? Yep. You could please, thank you. You could introduce yourself.
I'm Andrew Catalic, and I live at 2016 Cedar. I received a notification on November 15th about the tree ordinance thing with the 10 feet and the 12 feet. So I went out and measured it, and I found that those branches, all my branches came in compliance with at least three inches to spare. And in the wording of this document, it just says, "If you plan on trimming the trees," to let you guys know. That's it, and I didn't plan on doing it because they were in compliance. And there was a lot of snow, so that sucked to measure that in the middle of the winter. And then I got another one on January 9th, same wording. I didn't feel the need that I needed to do this, because I think that they got the wrong street, or the wrong house anyways. So I left it alone, and then on the 4/12/19, when I received the invoice for them cutting the trees down, or cutting the branches, you know, it was like two branches, and they charged me $101.18. But I had, not only I measured them, I had other people measure them, and I could have brought them here, but they're both working, so I mean, if you want, I could call them and they could show up to, you know, to show you that I wasn't in that. But like, they cut it, and I got this bill, and you can look across the street, and I'm not a very tall person, but you can hit your head on some tree branches. And so I'm just trying to look at how come my house was targeted when there's like inches, and the house across has got feet. And that's like that all over town. Like, some people will get these bills, and then you go by some people's houses, and there's stuff all over the sidewalk.
I don't know if this is for Dave. Dave, can you explain the process? I guess my curiosity in this is the timeline. Are we, I guess in the ordinance, is it with leaves, without leaves? I mean, I'm not a plant person by any means, but I'm wondering if we measure them, if they're saying they're, I think Mr. Moore mentioned measuring his in January, so there's not gonna be leaves on it. And then when we go to trim them, do the weight of the leaves or anything change it enough? What does the code exactly say? And how are people selected?
The whole community is selected, so I've been selected, you've been selected. It isn't random. It isn't a targeting in any way, shape, or form. And we have a very specific measuring device. That's a pole that latches together, and so when our measurements are taken, that pole is set right on the street, and if it touches a branch, it touches a branch. It's as simple as that. It's, you know, it's not me standing in the back of a pickup with a tape measure or some other, you know, less, or some other way that might introduce the possibility of error. The tree branches, you know, every year, so they're measured without leaves, and they're cut without, they're cut based on that time in the winter without leaves. Technically, by ordinance, you can measure them with leaves, and we do have times in the summer, like right now is a really good example, where some of the trees have a lot of moisture on them and in them, so they're sagging dramatically. So we're gonna have to make some contacts in the summer because we have issues with emergency equipment and other vehicles that are taller, that are hitting some of the lower branches, so we make those contacts. But we don't actively go out and measure trees this time of year, all summer. That's a fall-winter project, and people have multiple opportunities with many days, 20 days, 30 days, to cut trees after being noticed, before we measure them again to see if they're in compliance.
So I got a bit of a story. My mother got one of these nice little postcards about a year ago, and called me up panicking. So I went out there with my handy-dandy, you know, tape measure, and measured it up, and I too, you know, there's, you know, this is in code, right? I mean, it's got clearance. So I called the city, and I said, you know, can you, well, yeah, we'll send someone up right up with you to measure it. And they come right up, and sure enough, you know, there are some branches that were cut, or that were down low below that, you know. And I'm assuming that's something that you would do for anybody that had any question about that, right?
Sure, if somebody gets the initial letter, not the one that, the postcard that gets mailed to everybody, but if somebody gets a letter that says they're out of compliance, we'd be happy to do a site visit and measure the tree with them and show them, let them measure the instrument that we do, the tool we use to make the measurements, and stand there and show them, you bet.
Is there any more commission discussion on this?
Do we have a main motion?
We have a motion and a second.
I'd like to amend the motion to strike these two individuals, because I think there's enough questionable circumstances where we can make an exception for Peter and Andrew, right?
Do we have a second for that motion? Hearing no second, we're back to the original motion. So one final call. Is there any more commission discussion? Roll call.
Aye. No.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you both for being here tonight, and again, we would invite you, if you have questions, to contact our Community Development Office. They're willing to come out and check trees or answer questions, so thank you for taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 19-137 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale malt beverage license for September 21st, 2019 from Heritage Homes, Inc. at 509 Pine Street for a yard party. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Moving on to new business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 19-138 regarding the 2019 through 2020 annual supply of petroleum and transport tank wagon petroleum products. What is your pleasure?
With memorandum?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
So explain the jump, or the, is there any reason behind it? In the, I know it's .00 versus .0, but that's quite an increase.
So just to start off, the 2018-2019 prices were very competitive. And a number of the current 2019-2020 numbers are actually lower than the 2016-2017 numbers. There was, last year was a very competitive year, and these fuel handling prices seem to fluctuate, excuse me, year to year. And it's just who's aggressive with getting the bid and how the year's going for them, I guess. And keep in mind, these are prices per gallon. So on our gasoline, our lead-free gasoline, we go through about 35,000 gallons a year in the transport. And between the two prices on here, that's $836 difference for the year of handling their fuel handling costs to us. So that's just one example of-
So that's just in one example of the cost difference. Hopefully that's clear, a clear explanation.
Is there any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Minor?
Aye.
Mojer?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-141 regarding change order, excuse me, number one, for the final project acceptance and final payment for the Highway 81 slash Broadway sidewalk. That final payment is in the amount of $5,348.79. Total project cost was $56,340.75, which is actually, thanks to the change order, $166 less than we anticipated. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? I would just note that I was traveling along Broadway today and I saw several people using the new trail. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Mojer?
Aye.
Shaw? Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Aye.
Moore?
Take 12 months before we can get them on the road. But if they're able to fast track that and do more training, we can get them out sooner. But it's all going to be depending on the volunteer themselves because we're asking them to do it for us, not on their schedule.
And where does the training or the curriculum come from?
Uh, most of it comes from the state of South Dakota. Report writing, domestics, uh, community policing. There's probably 13 different courses here that are required by the state and so many hours for each course that we have to teach. And then there's a few leeway for us to actually implement some of our own programs, so.
I believe in what I've read, you shared quite a few other larger municipalities of our size that have this program. Are there stats you can share or have you talked to them about the benefits and what they've learned and how we can build from that?
Uh, most of them do the same thing that we're kind of looking for. They're using them for, uh, special events or big things like, uh, county fairs, um, different, you know, Jazz Fest, things like that. Some agencies are starting to use them as a kind of a, a pre-hiring where they're actually getting applicants that want to be in law enforcement and they're kind of getting their foot in the door or maybe the feel for it themselves before they actually go out and pursue the career.
Just have lots of questions. Sorry if I'm monopolizing the mic. Um, what is your, going to be like your application process and how you sort through? I could imagine this could be very popular and you could get 30 applications and, and how do you, I would imagine probably experienced, like you talked about, if there's a retired somebody that wanted to do that gets top billing or, or how do you then screen or, or what exactly would you be looking for?
Uh, we are going to do it the same way that we did would hire a regular full-time officer. Because we're giving them those powers, they need to go through the same screening process. So we're not just going to minimize that because it's a volunteer thing. They're going to have to go through the same thing as if you wanted to be an actual full-time police officer.
It's me again. Uh, continued training then if they do the 106 hours. I know you on the police force are constantly doing, um, shooting and, and recertification and things like that. Would they follow all of that as well?
96 hours a year after their initial training. So, uh, that does include ride-along time, so their time spent on the street, which, uh, can't remember off the top of my head, but they're only limited to so much time per month, so.
I think it sounds like a great way to utilize the resources we have in the community to assist our police department and help them be successful and provide for the safety of our community. Is there any more commission discussion?
I, just one question. What would be like, um, city liability, I suppose? Maybe this is a Ross question. Um, what, if, if someone in one of these were to get injured on the job that they're not getting paid for?
Um, as long as they are approved volunteers by this commission, it's just like with our volunteer fire, fire department. Approved volunteers are entitled to workers' compensation protections. Uh, and the flip side of that, you know, liability, if they do something stupid, um, those volunteers, as well as the city of Yankton, is the same standard as though they were, you know, full-time, regular police officers. Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Yes, Mr. Swenson, please step to the podium.
As I stated before, I'm, uh, one of the county commissioners, but I was also a reserve deputy sheriff for Sheriff Dave Hunoff. And, uh, I'd like to hand these out to you before I tell you a little bit of, of a story of how I got into this. There were seven of us that were dep, uh, reserve deputies for Sheriff Hunoff in the eighties and, um, it was an extremely, um, rewarding, uh, but how I got into it, uh, I worked for K-NAB Pipeline, which is New Star right now, but I was, spent four years in McPherson, Kansas. A sleepy little town with a sheriff and two deputies, uh, kind of like Mayberry. Um, I got to know some of the 400 employees at the refinery because I would work with those on a, them on a daily basis. Um, they told me about the reserve deputy program and I didn't know what they were talking about until they explained it. Now, um, at that time with only two deputies, they had a total of 35 reserve deputies and they were all trained and they were all, uh, able to enforce just like a regular deputy sheriff. Uh, one day about 3:30 in the afternoon, they were changing shifts. My shift changed at four o'clock. Um, saw a speeding car coming down Highway 81 south of McPherson, goes through McPherson just like 81 goes through Yankton. Refinery's about a mile south. Um, immediately after this car went by, one of the reserve officers that I knew as pickup, he went in pursuit of this vehicle. Well, back then, you're going to have to wind yourself back to 1977 and that was the year that Smokey and the Bandit came out. Everybody had a CB radio and that's how the deputies would communicate. Um, he went into pursuit after these bank robbers that had just robbed the bank in McPherson. Um, he chased the bank robbers for 20 miles until the Kansas Highway Patrol took over and they got him stopped and arrested. And he told me about two or three weeks later, um, when I went over to gauge one day with him, he said, Gary, he said, um, when we got there, I happened to have, um, an AR-15 in my pickup and I jumped out and backed up the Highway Patrolman that only had a, at that time, they carried a shotgun with a six-shot, uh, .357 Magnum. Um, these guys were heavily armed and, uh, he told me that, uh, when they, uh, saw this reserve deputy in plain clothes pull that AR out, he said they gave up. Um, later on, he also said that the two bank robbers couldn't figure out, they had cased the place and they knew there was only one sheriff and two deputies and they thought it was something like Mayberry RFD with one bullet Barney and that's why they hit, uh, McPherson. But, uh, had it not been for, the timing was wrong for them and the timing was right for the deputy, uh, on the reserve. So I highly would recommend this program. Um, I'm going to read this real quick and I'll stop. Uh, this is a letter from Sheriff Hunoff that he gave me dated 2006. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in support of Gary Swenson. Mr. Swenson was a reserve deputy sheriff at Yankton County in the eighties. To achieve this position, Mr. Swenson underwent considerable training, eventually was deputized, wore a uniform and served in Yankton County in many ways. Gary Swenson assisted and participated in providing safety, security for the citizens on federal and state parks, parades, community functions of all kinds. He also patrolled with other reserve officers and certified deputies to give extra protection to the public and other deputies as well. In addition, Mr. Swenson provided assistance in guarding and transporting prisoners, assisting in arrests and violations and helping at accident scenes. Gary Swenson provided a commendable service for no compensation for those years. I served as Yankton County Sheriff at that time and I recall Mr. Swenson well. He had an excellent, excellent attitude, was well-liked and an enthusiastic volunteer. I hope that this letter of accommodation, recommendation assists him in whatever he pursues in his endeavors and he's in trying to achieve. I firmly believe that he would be an asset to your organization. Signed, Sheriff Dave Hunoff, Yankton County. And with that, I will end, but I would strongly advise that you vote in favor of this. It won't cost anything. I provided my own weapon, my own service belt, uh, my mace and everything else. Uh, Dave supplied me with uniforms and I rode with, uh, deputies. I patrolled on my own because, um, I had a special MOS when I was in the military, a secondary, and I, as I was a bodyguard, so I had specialized training. So, um, I actually, I, uh, he, um, went over, I didn't have to go to any training because I'd already had, had that training in the military. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson, for your service, uh, your insight and, uh, your support for the program. Is there any more public input on this before we move on to vote? All right, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Number seven, under new businesses, consideration of memorandum 19 dash 139 regarding commission orientation slash refresher. Mr. Denherter, if you could lead us through this, please.
Commissioners, I'll try to go through this quickly since we've all been at it for quite a while now. Um, we do this every year. It's just a reminder of the do's and don'ts as a commissioner and also helps you interact with the public as issues arise. First thing I want to remind you about is, um, dealing with quasi-judicial matters. Those are of course matters that affect a small segment of society and not the entire community at large. Uh, those are matters involving conditional use permits, variances, petitions to vacate rights of way, license applications, we approve license applications all the time, uh, resolutions of necessity for special assessments, um, tax abatements. All of these matters basically require that you sit in judgment of others and decide the fate of one or a small group of parties. These matters under constitutional law require a neutral arbiter, a neutral decision-maker. And that means during these proceedings, you need to gather all of your information at that proceeding. Uh, where that becomes problematic as commissioners is you'll have, your constituents will come to you and say, hey, I've got this matter coming before the commission, you know, I got this, this land use issue, uh, conditional use permit and, uh, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what's coming up so you're not surprised. Well, those kinds of deals are quasi-judicial. It's going to feel very awkward, but you need to tell these folks, I'm sorry, you're going, we have the hearing coming up, come to the commission meeting, that's the time to address it. And that way people, all of the commissioners can hear what you have to say. If they give you anything they want you to review, ask them to just bring it to the meeting and share it with all of the commissioners. If they do give you something or send you an email, um, print that material and bring it to the commission meeting, uh, share it with Colleen or with Amy or with Al so that it can be added to the agenda packet. Um, the reality is if you personally investigate or you get involved with the matter ahead of the meeting, you put the action of the commission in jeopardy. Uh, at that point, you need to abstain and not participate in even the discussion that takes place. So, um, for the sake of constitutional due process, we have to kind of keep our distance from the public when these matters arise and we have to use the hearing as our opportunity to be brought up to speed. Uh, I think the, the staff does a good job of giving the commission the relevant information at the, the time, um, and members of the public are invited to participate, which is what you saw tonight with the, um, the issue of the, uh, assessment role for tree trimming. Um, as it relates to public records, uh, generally the presumption is all records of the public, all records held by the public are in fact public. However, then there are loads of statutes that limit or narrow the class of what's public information. The reason why it's important for you guys to know this is because oftentimes constituents will come to you and say, how come, you know, City Hall or the police department won't give me records A, B, and C? Well, I've given you a list of common things that are not public records. Um, investigative reports is a common one. We'll have kids that get in trouble and, uh, parents will call the PD and say, I want a copy of my, my child's police report. Those aren't public. So they might come to you and complain, but it's helpful if you know these items so you can respond appropriately, uh, and identify for them. Well, the reason they can't give that to you is because it's not a public record, even though our local police department has that information, that doesn't make it public. Uh, so this is a helpful list, but on the whole, um, most records are public. So if there's something you guys want that you don't have available, you can always request records and if there's a question as to whether you can have it, you can always direct those questions to me. Um, the public has a right to attend every official meeting. Um, that basically it means, um, we have to be careful about quorums and how many of us are together talking about city business. Um, once we have a quorum, now we are running the risk of open meetings violations. As you guys may recall, if you knowingly violate the open meetings rules, you can be criminally prosecuted for that. So, um, a quorum of this group is five. If you are ever in a situation where there's five of you around and we haven't done the, uh, the courtesy heads-up, uh, notice to the public, uh, I would encourage any one of you that notices that to politely exit if you can do so in a way that is dignified. Um, and i-if not, I would strongly encourage you to kind of separate from each other and, and try not to congregate so as to, uh, pre, um, you know, don't give the, um, uh, the appearance of an open meeting violation. The, um, the city of Yankton does a nice job of protecting against that. We had drop, problems in the past that led to recall votes and things of that nature that were largely, uh, derived from open meetings problems. Uh, so we can all do ourselves a big service by avoiding those types of issues. Um, emails, again, never hit reply all, uh, to information provided by city staff because you can accidentally create an open meetings problem for the city. If we have an email chain amongst all of the commissioners that isn't driven entirely by staff, we are now engaging in a discussion that involves a quorum and that has been determined to be an open meetings problem. So, uh, help of, help keep us all out of trouble and out of embarrassment, uh, by following those simple rules. Um, executive sessions, there's a limited set of reasons by which we can engage in, in executive session discussion. Um, our staff does a pretty good job of trying to make sure that, um, whatever is presented in executive session is narrow, um, and, uh, fits within the scope of what we can talk about legally in executive session. Um, those who participate in executive session are up to you. Uh, city manager, however, has the right to participate in all executive session conversations, um, unless the topic is the removal of the city manager. Um, the city attorney and city finance officer may attend executive sessions at the discretion of this board. So if you ever feel the need to kick Al and I out, you have the right to do so. Uh, and you can also ask that any other city employees remain for executive session conversation that's pertinent to their area of expertise if you wish. Um, the limited scope of what you can talk about in executive session is, uh, limited to employee or personnel matters, proposed or pending litigation with legal counsel. You get the, the right of attorney-client privilege in that meeting. Um, anybody who is not essential to the representation cannot participate. If you bring somebody from the outside into that conversation, you can lose that privilege. It's the highest level of confidential privilege that the law recognizes. Um, that also means if you share what takes place in executive session, especially relating to legal advice, you can blow it for the whole team. So keep what you learn in executive session, especially relating to attorney-client information, extremely confidential, even from spouses and significant others. Uh, it's just a, uh, it's important to be able to discuss legal matters strategically and behind closed doors. Uh, you can discuss contractual matters. If we're in the midst of negotiating contracts, those can be handled behind closed doors so as not to lose the, the competitive negotiating advantage by being able to discuss negotiating strategy. Uh, preparing for or negotiating with employee representatives on labor issues. As you know, we're in the midst of this year's renegotiation of the collective bargaining agreement, so we regularly have updates and ask for your input behind closed doors. And then marketing or pricing strategies of the, of city-owned businesses when public discussion may be harmful to the competitive position of the business. As you know, uh, the city of Yankton has, um, well, at least had a golf course, which was in direct competition with a, a local private, uh, country club. Uh, it's a perfect example of what that relates to. We can discuss competitive business. However, now we just have a course that we lease, so that issue's kind of off the table.
As of July 1st, uh, is it, or is it as of July 1st that security issues are added to that list?
I believe the list was expanded, yes. Includes security issues. I have not updated that on this though. Uh, that is correct. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and that relates, of course, to, um, safety plans and things of that nature. Uh, we don't necessarily need to share what our protocols are if someone shows up with a gun because that could potentially put our staff in, in danger, things of that nature. Um, as a general rule, you should participate in deliberation at a meeting and then vote on every item, but do not debate or vote when any of the following take place. One, there's not a quorum present. If there was a, if we lost a quorum at a given meeting, uh, Al would call the meeting anyway. Uh, I, I'd never seen that be an issue. If there's improper public notice of the meeting, we're blessed by being in a large enough community with staff that just take care of all, uh, meeting notices, so that's never an issue for us either. If there is, um, improper public notice of the item in question, that's important. Our agenda has specific line items, those are the things we can discuss. There's even a place on our agenda that's required by law where members of the public can speak to matters that are not on the agenda. The purpose of that portion of the meeting is for people to address the commission. We are not supposed to engage him or her in debate. Okay, that's, uh, if an item is brought to your attention that requires further follow-up or action by this board, the correct protocol would be to have that item placed on the agenda at a future meeting and revisit the issue. But it is a good opportunity for the public to address the commission on items, uh, that are concerning. Uh, for instance, um, the complaint that, uh, the gentleman made earlier about the neighbor who allowed the yard to become overgrown. I mean, that's, that's a fairly standard community complaint and this is an opportunity for people to address their elected officials. In quasi-judicial matters, you should not vote if any of the following are present. This is how we determine if there's a conflict of interest for quasi-judicial proceedings. It's a higher standard. In that situation, you can't vote if you have an indirect pecuniary interest. That means, um, any fight, anything that financial ben, financially benefits anyone closely tied to you. That can be a spouse, employer, family member, um, a direct personal benefit to you, uh, or to a blood relative or a close friend in a non-financial way. That includes a matter of great importance, uh, as in the case of a commissioner's mother being in a nursing home subject to a zoning issue before the board. You know, that's, that's sort of an issue where whether that nursing home gets its zoning request granted probably isn't going to have any impact. It's certainly not going to have a financial impact on your, your loved one that's in the nursing home, but you can see how that could create the perception of a conflict. That's what we're looking at in quasi-judicial matters. If there's a perception that you may have a conflict in the quasi-judicial realm, that can cause some serious legal problems in the event of a challenge. Um, an indirect personal interest, that's where there's an individual's, where an individual's judgment may be affected because of membership in some organization and a desire to help the organization to further its policies. Where that might come up is let's say there's a land use issue or a tax abatement issue or something involving a, a, a local charitable organization or a service club or something. Uh, if my church is perhaps dealing with the city to vacate an alleyway, for instance, that request is quasi-judicial. My very, being a member of that church potentially creates a conflict for me. Does that make sense? Uh, so you got to be aware of your personal memberships, what boards you might sit on in quasi-judicial matters, that matters. Um, in rulemaking or legislative matters, non- quasi-judicial matters, that's things involving the entirety of the public at large, um, ordinances, um, budgetary issues generally. The law is a lot more generous and when, under what context a, uh, a conflict of interest exists, uh, it's, it's, the constitutional issues don't come into play like they do for quasi-judicial. So in that situation, um, it, it only matters if you have a direct pecuniary interest. If you or your spouse and, uh, are going to financially benefit in some way, um, if it's benefiting your own property, uh, that's when you have a conflict of interest on legislative matters. Uh, or thankfully, we don't have really any noticeable infighting in this group. There, we don't play politics at this level, uh, near as I can tell for the most part, which I really appreciate you guys. Uh, but if two-thirds of the governing body votes that any one of you has an identifiable conflict of interest, no matter how minute you might all agree that that is, that can prohibit you from voting on a given issue. So, uh, you can use the conflict rules to gang up on each other if you wish, but I, I'm thankful that you guys don't do that. Um, also in rulemaking or legislative matters, you should not vote if you have or if there's reasonable or objective evidence that you have an unalterably closed mind on matters critical to the disposition of a matter or issue upon which you are voting. Um, the way you avoid trouble here is just don't publicly or on social media go out there and say, this is how I'm going to vote on this issue. The idea is when you are hearing things at this meeting, there's supposed to be debate and discussion and consensus reached on, on issues here in the meeting. Um, I mean, I'm not saying you can't tell the world what your positions are on things, but do not give the appearance that you have completely, you know, locked in your mind on something before you have an opportunity to vote on it. So that's essentially your, your rulemaking and your voting guidelines for, for sitting on this commission. Uh, as a general rule, you may talk with your fellow commissioners about any topic outside of a meeting. Um, I encourage you to do so, that's how you build consensus on things, but always be of, uh, aware of how many you're meeting with. Um, chat amongst yourselves in groups of four or less. Um, never agree to horse trade, don't swap votes on things, that can get you in trouble too. Um, social media guidelines, I've, if any of you want a fresh copy of it, years ago I created a memorandum that gave you some practical advice for dealing with social media. Uh, that has caused some problems for staff in my office in terms of what is stated on social media. If you guys want, uh, a fresh copy of that, I can email it to you at any time, just ask. Um, the, uh, the agenda contains a copy of this, um, this, uh, what I call the dashboard that I'm looking at here is my guidelines. Um, and the, the high points are here, so refrain from posting on each other's Facebook pages or similar social media sites other than, you know, your kitty's cute, that kind of stuff. Um, and the idea is don't try to create a paper trail for a public meeting, um, through online posting to be created. Uh, don't post confidential information or information that was discussed in executive session. Remember, whatever is discussed in executive session, we get the benefit, the privilege of that confidentiality. When you start sharing it, uh, you lose that confidentiality. There's no way to stuff that genie back in the bottle. Uh, when you're posting on social media, I strongly encourage you, especially if it's a, um, kind of a campaigning site or if you're doing some social media campaigning, uh, utilize a disclaimer that you speak for yourself when posting on matters of public interest. You guys are, you give up some constitutional rights to free speech when you become an elected official because you have certain agency rights and privileges and there's a perception out there that you speak for the community. So to dispel that, if you're giving your opinion on a particular issue, I strongly encourage you to start with, it's my personal belief that, or I don't speak for the whole commission, but I feel, uh, those types of disclaimers really help keep the city as an entity out of hot water if people don't like what you say and, and your public who elected you to office, uh, have a hard time separating what you say from the views of the city. Uh, so bear that in mind. And, uh, consider abstaining from voting on any quasi-judicial issue involving those who are Facebook friends. I know that's hard because some of us collect people and have thousands of people that are considered friends on Facebook or other, uh, social media connections. Um, but, uh, I strongly encourage you, best practice would be to maybe have a public page where everybody is your friend for purposes of campaigning and then maybe have a narrower personal page where your friends or connections are limited to those who are really truly your network of, of friends. Um, and as, as much as I like to say I have, you know, 800 to 1,500 friends, the reality is my circle is probably a lot smaller than that. Uh, and I, I encourage you to, to think long and hard about that too. And I encourage you to, to think long and hard about that, too. Roles and responsibilities, the role of the city manager. It's Amy's job to enforce all city ordinances, to supervise the administration of city affairs, to prepare the agenda for this body with the help of the finance officer. By, by ordinance, that technically falls to Al, but in practice, that's largely the agenda's managed by Colleen through the city manager's office. To make recommendations to this body concerning city affairs, to appraise the body of the city's finances. Amy did a heck of a job taking us all through the budget earlier tonight. She's to be commended, that's tough and that was an efficient job. To submit an annual budget prior to August first of each year, I think we're on track. To perform and to enforce the terms of all contracts and franchises of which the city is a party, and to sign all warrants for the payment of money, all contracts essentially over two hundred dollars, which must be approved by this body. To prepare, to introduce and discuss all ordinances and resolutions, and to appoint and remove all officers and employees, or to do the same through delegation to a department head. That excludes only Al, myself, and I believe the library board. The duties of each commissioner, by contrast, if necessary, you have the, the right and the power to inquire of city employees, but bear in mind, there is a restriction under state law. If you direct the employees of the city manager in their responsibilities, you can be criminally prosecuted. You have to respect the line there. So it's best to run your inquiries of city employees through the city manager and then you know you'll be okay. I don't think that I've ever seen a problem with this commission in that regard, but that is something to keep in mind. In a commissioner form of government with a city manager, you have to respect the, the city manager's role. She is the queen of Yankton, so to speak, and you tell her how to run the town, yeah, she's gonna hate me for saying that, don't put that in the paper. But the reality is, everything runs through Amy and she takes the city in the direction that you tell her to take it. So I appreciate the way this commission has interacted with the staff and respecting that line. I think we have an extremely functional form of government. We are very lucky. It works very, very well and we have minimal problems. The duties of this commission also include reviewing issues presented by the city manager to consider public input with limitations we've already discussed, quasi-judicial, et cetera. To vote on all issues except when we have a conflict of interest. And to appoint and remove the city manager, the finance officer, the city attorney, and the library board of trustees. And the last thing I have is additional duties of the mayor, this is always my favorite. It is Nathan's job right now to preside over this commission. He has to receive service of process if the city is ever sued for any reason. And you are also the head of the city for military and ceremonial purposes. In times of public danger or emergency, the mayor may take command of the police, appoint additional police, and govern by proclamation, and to call on adults to aid in the enforcement of laws, and to call out any organized militia within the county to suppress any riots or other disorderly conduct. So if society completely crumbles, Nathan will, will save us. It's on you, man.
We were close on March thirteenth.
Yeah, we were. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thanks for hanging with me, guys.
Thank you, Ross. Again, is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the public like to address the commission on what we just heard? All right, moving on to number eight, under new businesses consideration of memorandum nineteen dash one forty-five, supporting the introduction, public comments, and first reading of ordinance number ten twenty-two, an ordinance on the franchise agreement with Midcontinent and VAST. Can we get an introduction?
Introduce.
Is there any more commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? All right, moving on, number nine, under new businesses consideration of memorandum nineteen dash one forty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute three municipal bicycle trail easements on private property adjacent to West City Limits Road in the Gulfview Estates subdivision. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. There being no other business on tonight's agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and contractual matters under South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are now adjourned into executive session.